We ready? Yes ma'am.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. May have a motion to approve and accept this agenda with an amendment to item 7D, personnel report as recommended.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with acknowledgements and recognitions. Dr. Pruitt?
The district is pleased to recognize Kelly Education for their generous sponsorship of the upcoming 2025 Educator Empowerment Conference, a one-day event designed to equip future educators with the tools, resources, and confidence to succeed in the classroom. Kelly Education has been a trusted partner to our district for the past three years, playing a key role in significantly improving our substitute fill rates. Their ongoing support helps ensure minimal disruptions to students' learning when our certified teachers are absent. Tonight, we are honored to formally accept Kelly Education's sponsorship contribution in support of this important professional learning event. At this time, we would like to invite a representative from Kelly Education to say a few words and present the sponsorship check.
Mr. Pruitt, use the microphone? Yes, please. Thank you for having us. I'm Carrie B. Savage, and I'm the Director of Client Services for Kelly Education. And we really want to thank you for this opportunity to sponsor this event. When Jody approached me and told me about this empowerment event that she wanted to push on, I said to her, "You had me at hello." Because it is so important for us to continue educating our students, inspiring people to want to be teachers, and we are excited to be part of it. Kelly's slogan is "Education is a shared responsibility," and I truly believe that. So also, come on in, Mike. Some of you know Mike. Mike is our dedicated account manager here, and Jody gives him compliments all the time. Our successful partnership, I want to acknowledge you, is because of you, here in Ankeny, providing you guys with your substitutes. Hopefully, you'll like some. But I want to formally thank him for that. He's made great strides. You've done an amazing job. So thanks, Mike. And we have a check for you.
I would just like to say thank you to Jody, to the entire district. It truly is a partnership. Our positive fill rates are not just Kelly, it's Ankeny too, and the work that they all do at the schools to make a good environment for our substitutes. So I just feel very grateful and blessed to be a part of the Ankeny community.
Thank you. Yes, we'll come down. Yep?
There's nothing better than a big styrofoam check. All right, one, two, three. Thanks.
Your mic's not on. We've got one more. I have it on good authority that Dr. Pruitt wanted this buried, but I pulled the boss card. And so we're going to congratulate our superintendent, Dr. Eric Pruitt, who was recently recognized as a Paul Harris Fellow. This includes a certificate of appreciation for his contributes to the Rotary Foundation and a Paul Harris pin. A Paul Harris Fellow is something that is recognized internationally by Rotary. Dr. Pruitt's collaboration with our community and the time and care he's taken to form deep partnerships is a part of what has made him an exceptional leader for our organization. We wanted to take a minute to honor and celebrate your contributions to the school district. So on behalf of the board, thank you, Dr. Pruitt. Congratulations. Where that was going to fail was there was a board member there when you received it. So that's, I'm glad we were able to do that. So, all right, we are going to move on to communication from the public. We've got a lengthy list here today. First of all, I think we've obviously got our student population from Copan here, but it wasn't on the agenda. So just, so we're all on the same page. The board cannot interact with you when it's not an agenda item. So we're happy to listen to you and the kids who've signed up and hear about their experience, but it won't be a two-way dialogue like it typically is because we want, part of the reason we have things, the reason we have things on the agenda is so public has a chance to see it, and if they wanted to respond, come as well. So just know, we're happy to listen and we're glad that you're here, but we won't be able to interact with folks from Copan. But, okay. On behalf of the board, I would like to invite Joey Beach, who is on the agenda, to step forward to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern. Please begin by stating your name. Thank you for limiting your comments to three minutes so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. We ask that you remember Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or individual students. This board meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting, which includes your comments, will be maintained on YouTube for five years. Thank you for your support of our school district.
All right, well, my name is Joey Beach, and I am the, I live at 7:20. I don't know if you have to give address anymore.
No, you don't have to.
Proud parent of two graduates, an Ankeny High School graduate and a Centennial graduate. Yes, my son was one, was the first graduating class of Centennial. And while that was very disruptive for that class, it also taught them agility, life skills, and they are thriving. So while, yes, it's hard to innovate and do bold things, Ankeny's done a really good job of that, and our students benefit from it, even though sometimes it can be rocky. With that, that's part of why I want to speak tonight, because I'm a firm believer that Ankeny is doing that again. It would be easier if we wouldn't have done two high schools. It would be easier if we didn't do an innovative hub. But that's not what Ankeny does. We do the hard things. And not only are you working to do the hard stuff by putting in an innovative hub and making sure our activities and arts have the facilities they need, you're doing it while maintaining the existing tax rate, which has done nothing but go down over the last many years. So on behalf of the community who will benefit from all that happens there and the students, I really want to thank you for making those bold moves, for doing it. And now that I checked the clock, I also want to speak a little bit, because I did spend 10 years as the Executive Director of Ankeny Economic Development Corp. And it was clear, all 10 years, workforce was always the prime thing that attracted people here and attracted businesses here. And that's not only key now and has been for years to come, but it's going to be key in the future. And we want to give our kids all the opportunities they can, but also selfishly, we want to continue to attract businesses and the talent that they need to be successful. On top of that, it helps all of us in that. One of the key things, having been on the task force, that helped work on the programs, the six career clusters that are under there, is one of the key things is that not only, yes, we want to educate them in all the career clusters, but we also, what I love about it is how they will interact across the clusters and be able to do that in the innovative hub, because economists and business leaders are really clear. In the next few years, what's really going to set people apart is their ability to work cross-function and to know that you could be in medical, but you also need to know how to operate a robot. And those types of collaborations and cross-functional intelligence that we're going to need is really one of the core things behind the innovative hub.
Thank you, Joey. We appreciate the work you're doing to support this effort. Okay, so we have a number of folks who've signed up to speak tonight. Half are here from Copan, so I think we'll start with the students and then we'll switch to folks from Public School Strong. So I'm going to ask you to hold me accountable to make sure I get everybody who's on the list. So I would like to invite Isaiah Pines to the microphone, please.
I'm Isaiah Pines. Some of you know me from previous journalism interviews and some just personally from church or just the community. I just want to say thank you for all that you guys have done to provide for these Copan students and for the host and everything you guys do just in general. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Laney Midkiff to the microphone. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Hi, my name is Laney Midkiff, and I am hosting a Copan student this year. Every year since my sophomore year of high school, I remember my Spanish teachers giving the same presentation about Copan. These students from Mexico each year come to Ankeny for about two weeks to experience the, what it's like to live in America. Each year, I wanted to host, but it never worked out timing-wise for my family. However, this year, we got lucky. This experience has been like no other and nothing like I expected it to be. My Spanish teachers do an amazing job at pairing up students who have similar interests and personalities. I got paired with a girl named Sophie, and I'm extremely lucky. Over the past week, she's become a great friend of mine. Students from Copan come to Ankeny for the sole purpose of experiencing authentic and daily life of an American. Over the past, over the past week, I've shown Sophie what my daily life is like. She got to come to my show choir rehearsal, eat at new fast food restaurants, and go shopping at Target, got to see a high school football game, and we even went to Adventureland. Through this, she has gotten to experience what my culture is like, and watching her experience this has brought me a new pride in my culture. Watching her experience new things, new foods, new places warms my heart because I get to see someone else enjoying my culture. Not only has she learned about and experienced my culture, I've learned so much about hers. I've learned what her school day is like, the different classes she takes and those structures. I've learned about the activities she participates in and what her daily life is like. She told me stories about her family, her friends, and we, me and my family are just extremely lucky to have her, and we are very grateful we got to open up our house and our lives to her. Sophie's experience here, however, has been unique to her, and no student will do the exact same thing as the next, because each student who lives in Ankeny has a different life and routine. These students are here to experience that unique routine. When you're hosting, you don't need to take students to do anything extreme or out of the ordinary. They are here because they want to experience a truly authentic American life. They are here to follow our students and gain a broader understanding of American culture. This year, I watched my Spanish teachers have an especially hard time gathering families to host students. They would talk to our Spanish class about hosting a student, but that's a very small audience. Next year, I hope that they are able to reach a bigger audience for more hosts. Students are not required to be in Spanish to host, but this program needs more students who are willing and interested in hosting. This helps students here at Ankeny gain a bigger pride in their culture, and bringing in more host families can give a bigger opportunities for students from Copan to come visit Ankeny. Ankeny has a great community, great schools, and a perfect representation of an authentic American city. I hope to see this program expand within the next few years, and I hope that there will be more students and families wishing to host, while also more students from Copan wishing to experience here in Ankeny firsthand. I feel extremely lucky that I've been able to be a part of this program because I've been able to spend time with Sophie and get to know her as a person and friend. This program holds a special place in my heart because they've introduced me to amazing people and they provided me with a lifelong friendship. Thank you.
Next up is Diego Scheffler.
It is really hard to find the right words to describe what Ankeny means to me. I still remember the first time I came here, standing in the airport, nervous, excited, and having no idea how much this exchange would impact my life. This is my third time coming as part of the exchange and also my last one, since I'm now a senior. Each time I've been here, I have been welcomed by amazing families who made me feel at home from the very first moment. I've learned so much from them, and I hope they have learned from me, too. The reason I decided to come back every year is because every time has been a completely different experience. Each one has given me lifelong friendships, new perspectives, and the chance to learn about a new culture so different from mine while also sharing a bit of my own. This program has truly changed me. It has made me a different person from who I was before. It has changed the way I see the world and the way I connect with people. Living with different families, adapting to a new culture, and connecting with people from all kinds of backgrounds has taught me things that no classroom ever could. And finally, I just want to say thank you to families who opened their homes, to the teachers and organizers who make this possible, and to every friend I've met along the way. But most of all, thank you, Ankeny, for your warmth, your kindness, and for becoming a part of who I am. I'm leaving with my heart full, taking a piece of Ankeny with me and leaving a piece of myself here. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Fatima Himenez to the microphone. Fatima, I'm sorry.
Just, I wanted to say like, thank you. And sorry, it was like a little mistake, but now that I'm here, I just want to like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to have like an exchange program. And I think it's really, it can be like a really like a big challenge, but I think it's great to have like these kind of experiences, and that makes me like grow in a really, in a lot of like ways. And just thank you.
Thank you. Did I get them all?
I think so.
Okay. All right, Copan family, now's the time to go, if you want to go. You don't have to stick around.
That's a hard act to follow. So heartwarming. Hi, everybody. My name is Beth Sloan. I'm an Ankeny resident, a retired public educator, and a proud mom of two adult children who graduated from Ankeny Schools. As you know, our group, Public School Strong, brought to you earlier this month a resolution that you plan to discuss tonight and take action around. We really appreciate you putting it on the agenda. As I shared at our last meeting, this resolution is a statement to our community that you, as a board, believe in and will advocate for every child and staff member at Ankeny Schools. Thank you for adding it to your agenda. It is what our public wants, and it is a resolution that also indicates to our lawmakers that we have high expectations for our tax dollars and that those tax dollars go to public education. So we're here to support you and your legislative goals this year, and this resolution is a statement that you want our community's help to support our Ankeny Schools. So let's continue to advocate for adequate funding for our students and our families in Ankeny. So thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Sherry Hawke.
Sherry Hawke, just a little prelude to later. This is an important day. Our Public School Strong group has been gathering signatures on a resolution to support our Ankeny Public Schools and public schools across Iowa, in fact, and it now is in your hands for review. We have an opportunity to pay it forward, as my Aunt Norma Johnson Smith did several decades ago. Norma hated that children with disabilities and mental challenges were segregated from the general population of students who didn't need any extra help, any assistance at all. And she advocated for them her entire career as a teacher. And two of her seven children, my cousins, worked for AEA in Iowa for their entire careers. No one thinks about that much anymore because accommodations and assistance and resources offered through IEP and 504 plans address these concerns in the public school setting. But private schools don't seem to have the same requirements or accountability, or at least don't share a lot of that. These are just a few issues our schools must address with our legislators and our governor since the '25-'26 school year looks to cost over $300 million in funds for ESAs with all eligibility caps removed. This is just wrong, and it places the onus on our public schools to continue providing the best education for all our students but at bargain basement SSA increases in funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Dixie Webb.
I'm going to decline for now.
Okay. We'll circle back. Carrie George.
Thank you very much. I thought, boy, this resolution has a lot more interest than I thought when I pulled up to park tonight. I didn't realize who else was going to be here.
Sorry to disappoint.
Thank you very much for putting this on your agenda tonight, and I would ask you to please support and vote for the resolution. I know there are some concerns that I've heard regarding the 5% that's in the resolution regarding state supplemental aid, but the issue is, it's a starting point. There are many years where SSA has not met the needs of our public schools, and this is a start to make up for some of that. The other issue is, I have nothing against private schools. In fact, my daughter teaches in a private school. My son-in-law was an administrator in a private school. My granddaughter went to a private school. I supported financially myself private schools. I just don't believe that our public money should be supporting private schools, private schools which are unaccountable to anybody for what they do with that money. So that's the reason that this resolution has been, that we have asked you to put this on your agenda and asked you to consider it, is that public schools need adequate funding to continue to do the job that they're here to do. And the voucher program is stealing money, whether they admit it or not. It is stealing money from our public schools. And people who were, I don't remember the exact statistic, but it was something near 80% of the people who got the vouchers in the first year were already paying for their children to attend private schools. They didn't need it. They already had the funding themselves to send their children to private school. And now it's a much broader audience with an unlimited amount. Public schools are limited in the amount of money that you get from the state. Private schools are not. Vast number of them drastically raised their tuition when the vouchers became available because now there was more money that was available for them. And as I said, public dollars should not be, should not be funding private education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, I got everybody right? Okay. I trust you, Steph. I just wanted to trust that they're fine. Moving people in different order than how they showed up, so I just wanted to make sure everybody had the opportunity to speak. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as recommended. Motion? Second. Do we have any questions about items on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to information only, we are going to start with our students' school board representative updates. Dr. Pruitt, do you have a particular order?
Ankeny and Centennial.
Angelina was hoping you said something different.
Ames 55 to 30, Suet City East 26 to 20. In dance, Ilmae got first place solo at Heartland Championships. For cheer, Game Time Spirit won first place in Grand Champs at the Heartland Cheer and Dance Coed. Including our band, North Polk, our band went to North Polk Marching Band Invitational. They were ranked first in Class A and Best Overall Score. They got caption awards for Best Color Guard and Best Drum Line. They went to Valley Fest Showdown. They placed third in Class A. In the IHSMA State Marching Band, they got Division One. Our student council have been quite busy this year with setting up for Homecoming Week. They also helped set up for Under the Lights, which they came very early in the day after being with their teams to help set up all the fun games and activities. They set up the dance, which included coming in early at 8:00 AM to help set up for decorations and then continue to get ready. Our Talon, which is our school newspaper, has been doing a wonderful job in putting out stories week after week with lots of hard work. One in particular was the River Phillips, by River Phillips, the Chocolate Milk Debacle. It won the best newspaper online award. This article touched on the feelings of students and their passion for chocolate milk being reduced, along with nutrition factors. And on October 23rd, the Talon attended the Iowa High School Press Association because they were in the running for all Iowa News team, and they won. Some of our National Merit Scholars were Serena Cassidy, Jackson Ridgers, and Benjamin I took an old-school approach when surveying the students. I did not send an online survey. I took a risk and went kind of knocking door to door. I would visit students whether they were in their study halls, at their lunch, during their opens, before and after school, to have a more personal conversation with them about how they felt about our school, how they felt they were being supported, and what areas of growth were needed. I surveyed 90 middle school students from eighth to ninth of Southview Middle School. From 10th to 11th, I did 130 sophomore and junior students. And from 12th grade, I ended with 185 senior students who participated. Some of the student positives at Southview were school links. They said they could find a lot of information on school links, whether for new opportunities in college and financial aid, which many of them seemed to be worried about. They said their flex and RTI helps bring, helps more, brings more help to students in the way they can say, Tuesday, I need to go to my science classroom, and on Wednesday, I need to hit on English. They said they really did like that time. Many students are participate in their sports and clubs. They say it's a nice variety to be able to do something for your school, and it's nice to win, many said. One person said that theater is gaining quite a popularity. Many students also said that they're very excited to go to the high school for the theater program that we have. They said they were very excited about Alice in Wonderland. Many said from ninth grade that the lunch has more variety this year compared to their eighth grade year. And students and staff are always willing to help each other out. Someone said particularly that the school was gaining a sense of community and belonging. They said they felt that it was growing and that they felt very proud to be part of Ankeny here at Southview. For Ankeny High School, many students said teachers are supportive, are supportive and are there for students. They felt that teachers were there emotionally and ready to always push them to do better. One made a comment and said, when my teacher feels that I'm slacking off, they're always there to push me forward because they know I can do better things. Another thing they said was really nice about high school was the job shadowing program that we have. When I asked what type of jobs, many said they were with the firefighters. They said it was nice to get a glimpse of what their job is. Many don't think about what really a firefighter does besides going out and putting the fire out. They said that Ankeny High School is a social environment. They said people are open to speak, people are friendly and kind. Another thing was the courtyard being used in the summertime. When the days were hot, the courtyard was open to students during their lunch, and many said it felt nice to finally use a piece of our school that isn't normally used. They said they really enjoyed it. Another thing was chances to get involved. At Ankeny High School, we have many clubs, sports, theater. They said it was a great chance to get involved with their flexible schedules. They said they had more opportunities to have a club this day and a club the other day and just get more involved. Another thing students said were the exchange students being here, as seen by the Kapan students. I did not get to speak with the Kapan students as they came a little bit later in the week, but I did speak to someone hosting, and they said it was nice to get a glimpse of new culture, and it brings new knowledge to them from how different schools can be from one country to ours. And another last that many students touched on was lunch. They said that compared to last year, the lunch is way better this year, the only exception being that they missed the chocolate milk, as seen by the article.
Good thing the article covered that.
Some areas of growth. At Southview, they said the securely blocking learning sites that said sometimes they understand why teachers need securely to make sure students are on track, but it does suck when you're researching and you can't find that. Another said that they are not allowed to use the courtyard, so that they would like to use it. Another thing was students being in the bathroom. They said sometimes it's uncomfortable to walk in and just see a lot of students in there and not knowing if a teacher can, they can bring a teacher out simply because that teacher is teaching, and you can't disrupt that. They said the MINGA app, simply when coming into school, they understand it's for safety reasons, but it does suck when you see the time ticking to get a first period and you're kind of stuck because someone in front of them didn't pull out their MINGA app faster. Another thing was more information to be presented about classes they could take in high school. They said that while future-ready week is great to learn about the classes you can take, it's quite limited. Teachers sometimes don't elaborate as much on what classes you can take, if you have to take this class first and then take that class. They said that sometimes they hear it from older siblings or people from the high school that say, well, you can take this one, but you have to take this class first, and that kind of stumps them. At Ankeny, they would like more flexibility with credits such as art. Some, again, they said, I was a new person coming into the district and I wanted to take this art class, but before that, you had to take Art One and Art Two. But now I don't have time to do that, and it just makes them a little bit put out that they can't. Someone, a new student, said that the website for new students is hard to navigate, our Ankeny High School website. They said sometimes they couldn't find everything they needed and that it was just overall hard to navigate. Another thing was the phone policy. A lot of students said they know why it's there, they know it's in place. They said, I know it's been in place for the last three years, but one thing that was new was the official warning at the beginning of the school year. They said they would like the one first warning and the second warning, that's the phone to the office, but they said, we understand why it's in place. They just would like the warning back, is what I gathered from them. Then again, the MINGA app, they said it sucks when someone is in front of you and they're not, they don't have their app ready to go because then we're all stuck in the cold sometimes, and we want to get to class. And last was the securely blocking learning sites. I have issues sometimes with it where I'm trying to research, and many students also felt the same way. They said, we know why it's there, but if there would be a way to work around the learning sites that we need, it would help. I've also spoken with teachers because Ankeny High School and Southview Middle School would not be the schools they are without our teachers. Teachers are very important. And many teachers said that PTO is very flexible. They like being able to move around their own schedule but also be there for the students because that is primarily their job, and they love being there. They said the admin is very supportive of teachers and is always willing to help them in every way that is possible. Others said students make the day interesting. There is never a boring day. And others said time to collaborate with peers and share data. One teacher in particular said it was nice to be able to speak to someone else and say, hey, I did this my way and I didn't see a change in students' learning, and if you did it some other way, and they can share that and things do change. Another thing was able to get supplies and resource quickly. Many said that if they needed something, it was easy to get, or if they had to order it, it was also quite quickly that admin was very helpful in that area, communication. Overall, for growth, many teachers say, said they would want, they would want to see more school board members in the building. They said it's important for you guys to see just how the decisions you guys make impact the students and the way students is. They did appreciate Dr. Pruitt coming around to the schools. They said it was very nice for students to see him. One last thing that many students that spoke to when asking these questions were, many students were concerned about the geo bond. Many said over classroom sizes. Others said they wonder if the hub is more for athletics than fine arts. Someone said that when they started reading about it, they didn't really see a lot over the fine arts. And that is one of their words as getting out of Ankeny High School and for new students who are in band, in choir. And others are just very confused on what the geo bond is and what it does for them. They said, I looked at the videos that you guys put out there, I saw the podcast, but I'm still confused on what it is and what it's going to do for me or for other students. My perspective on it was that students need someone to explain to them what the geo bond is in simple terms for them. Additionally, having an adult can explain the benefit of the new hub and its opportunities. This, of course, with it coming up, but it would show them that, hey, while we may not see that, other students that come in and other future generations, whether they're siblings, cousins, or just new people coming in, this is going to better all the generations that are coming after us just as we are leaving. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Evelyn, does anybody have any questions? I, um, that had taken you a lot of time to go around and talk to those people and compile, you know, look for themes in that. So, you know, on behalf of the board, thank you for taking your, your personal time is a commodity, and your willingness to do that and represent those ideas are much appreciated for us. I look forward to, once this guy passes next Tuesday, talking to Dr. Pruitt and Samantha about how we can get in front of kids a little bit more around what this means. I was actually thinking, sometimes students are the best at selling ideas to their parents, and I was wondering about if perhaps that was a missed opportunity for us.
Yes. One of them in particular said, I wanted to go home and tell my parents about it, but then I researched it and I didn't really know what to tell them except that it's something new that they're building out there.
Yeah.
A lot of meat to it, so.
Yeah. We feel that pain. We understand that. Yeah. Anybody else?
No, I think it's a good for you to go out and actually, you know, speak with the students so then they can see that there is a student rep that is on the board that they can go to and they know who you are now to pass along feedback to us. So hopefully, hopefully the students gained some, got something from it as well by you doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Lydia got you on camera, so you might be in the talent here, Stan.
Does everyone have access to this themselves? Okay, I just wanted to make sure because like some of the stuff I might be talking about, you're like, oh, well, I don't.
No, we're good.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Angelina Myers. I'm a senior at Centennial, and I'm very happy to be sharing this here today with you and kind of giving you an update on what Centennial is doing, what we are expecting for this year, and our goals coming up. So my presentation, I'm going to have three main things going on, and it's just going to be about our activities, a survey I completed, and then our action. So, like I said, activities, survey, and action. What purpose does this have and how can we amplify our student voice? So I, my goal today is just to kind of connect feedback to the district goals and pillars and see how academics, people, and supportive environments can be improved and what we're already doing well. So, Centennial, we've already accomplished a lot, and we're proud of that, but we're also not afraid to kind of look at what we can improve on and see what we can do for us this year and better connect it to the district. Starting off with athletics, we've had a really great year. There have been hundreds of students involved throughout the entire school, whether it's from eighth grade all the way to 12th. We've had success in multiple areas, highlighting our strong seasons and a lot of teamwork and great school spirit. We've had leadership on and off the field with students making visits, even elementary schools mentor students at recess, play different sports with them, and it's just been a great way to give back to the community but also highlight these students are excelling at what they're doing. And, yeah. We also just wanted to say thank you to all the coaches, parents, and volunteers who have put time and effort into this because it would not happen without them. And the athletics have really just shown amazing pride, character, and community this year. And I'm not going to go read through all of these, but we've had many accomplishments from girls swimming and diving to our unified Special Olympics team, girls cross-country, boys cross-country. And, yeah. Next, our activities and recognitions. Even beyond sports, students are excelling in academics, leadership, and arts. There have been a lot of achievements in our marching band, placing first place at multiple competitions through leadership and our mentors preventing violence and student council, and then as well in our arts programs. There have been a lot of active clubs this year, and we're currently working on adding more even, such as community projects and service. We used to have a volunteer club, but it kind of was shut down for a little bit, so we're working on getting that back. And then as well as fundraisers and new initiatives led by students. So we've just been really proud of seeing all of the initiatives and creativity shown from our community and students and the teamwork and school pride that they exhibit. So, fun stuff so far. We have had OTP, which is on the prowl, basically Field Day for Big Kids. It is a highlight of the year. It's something that everyone looks forward to. We had 51 teams participate and 769 participants. We also had 53 volunteers helping out, and it was just an amazing turnout. I got to run the tug-of-war station. It was amazing. I love getting to work with people, and it's fun also seeing my friends just absolutely wipe out on the tug-of-war. So, all of the, all, like every single participant and volunteer really just enriched the experience. I, I volunteered at this for three years now, and I can say this year for sure, you can just tell there's like a different spirit in the school, and that's been something we've been working on. As in student council, I was just very happy to see that. And it was a great day. Everyone had a lot of fun, and it's been something that people still talk about, how they love the engagement continuing to rise across different grades and different programs. Continuing on that week, we had our homecoming pep assembly and as well as our dance. I would just say, if any of you guys are visiting schools, find out what a pep assembly is. They are, you can't miss them. Huge shout out to Braylon DKK, who's really stepped in and tried to make these pep assemblies more engaging and just kind of like what you'd expect to see on like a high school musical type movie where it's just like, wow, that is like really fun. Everyone's up cheering loud and everyone is participating. So our pep rallies have truly been full of energy and school spirit. We've had games, performances, competitions, and even losing punishments for grade levels or teachers that are not showing the most school spirit. So we have our spirit judges who will determine that, and last time, Mr. Steinkamp got an ice bucket dumped on him. So, it's, it's, it's fun. And, yeah, these homecoming week activities and pep assemblies really unite our whole school and show with our spirit days, community events, and there have been great turnouts. So we also had our homecoming King and Queen, Ava Barton and Blake Bybee, and these events really have strengthened our school connection and have gotten very positive feedback from our students. So next, I'm going to kind of go over what my survey will be about. I ended up getting 789 responses all across from grades eight to 12. I got 569 from Northview and then 229 from Centennial. Centennial was lacking a little bit, so I'm going to think of how to kind of engage that further. This was purely just a survey sent out. But I think now for next time, I'm going to both send it out and then kind of, as Evelyn did, go door knocking and see if I can get some real-life, in-person responses. So I, in the survey, I collected data through both free responses where students could type what they felt and just like, kind of like a scaled answer of like, how well do you think this connects to our school or how well is this being done? So for the first pillar, I wanted to connect it to our rigorous and relevant activities. 73% of students said that they are at least somewhat challenged academically, which is a great improvement from our past years, as well as 68% reporting that they have had lots or many real-world, real-world learning activities and project-based learning. Students have reported that they love hands-on and career-related activities and that they they But I think now for next time, I'm gonna both send it out and then kind of, as Evelyn did, go door knocking and see if I can get some real life, in-person responses. So I, in the survey, I collected data through both free responses where students could type what they felt and just like, kind of like a scale answer of like, how well do you think this connects to our school or how well is this being done? So for the first pillar, I wanted to connect it to our rigorous and relevant activities. Seventy-three percent of students said that they are at least somewhat challenged academically, which is a great improvement from our past years, as well as 68% reporting that they have had lots or many real world, real world learning activities and project-based learning. Students have reported that they love hands-on and career-related activities and that they really appreciate having practical classes that help lead them into their future. Some quotes that I really picked out were just students saying, I learn better with hands-on things, career path classes help me see my options, and just how students connected to their future. So a couple insights for this, I just said that, like kind of what I gather from all this information is that students really do learn best through interactive and like real-life scenarios where it really gets in their mind more and they're able to physically and mentally see like, I could be doing this. They also say that challenge can vary depending on teacher or subject, which is always, that's always a conversation, but it's just always something to be aware of. And that students just want this learning to connect to the real world and that's why they are really happy with some of the Orbis programs and what they hope to see in the hub. Next would be talented people and kind of I tied this into how well our teachers are supporting our students. So 67% of staff and teachers are supportive most or all of the time, students report. And they say this because students value teachers who listen, encourage, and check in personally. A lot of feedback have been that the relationships are a big strength in Centennial. And students have said that teachers who care motivate them. When teachers check in, it makes a difference and just different things showing how that one-on-one connection with the teachers is showing that someone is there and cares for them has made a huge difference in their school. Some insights on this would be that I've really just gathered that the strong teacher and student relationship has made a huge difference in their school and students really appreciate the empathy, communication, and flexibility that teachers have with them. The key quote I've kind of picked out from here was someone said, when teachers care, it changes everything of just how it's, from the moment they walk in that building, that teacher greeting them at the door, to the moment they walk out and it's someone saying goodbye, like, see you tomorrow. Like, it just makes a difference no matter how small. Then the final pillar, the supportive environments. So I kind of collected data on just like more facilities and technology because that's been a big thing of like securely and different things like that. So 94% of students said that our facilities were supportive for learning, which was amazing. I was honestly not suspecting that big of a number, but it's great. And students really value the safe, clean, functional, and inclusive areas that we have within our building and they really like some of the study areas with the plants and the greenery that just feel a little more relaxed and like airy, that they have more space. Programs like Javagag and OTP build the community and they really also appreciate that, having more cross-school connection rather than just, oh, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, or like eight, nine. They've also said that they value spaces that feel welcoming and connected and it shows a strong engagement comes from the positive and respected environments because a lot of people love being in the library and different places that they know, yes, I can have my calm time, it won't be like super loud in here and it's a safe place for me to be doing what I want to do. Some, before I move on to the next thing, the general feedback that these students said, I just kind of collected was they had no huge concerns. A lot of people quite literally said, no, nope, all good on the free responses when I'm asking like, what do you have concerns about? I honestly had a hard time finding some of the responses that weren't, no, nope, all good. So that is good. And there was a lot, a lot, a lot of gratitude for staff, teachers, and support systems placed within the school. Another quote, a couple quotes I found that are really sweet. I saw that one says, teachers are just really nice and care how we feel. Janitor's lunch staff make the day better, teachers are supportive and make class enjoyable. So the takeaway from that, I would just say that students, they're happy. They appreciate the care and kindness that's going on in our building and the support they have experienced daily. So now moving on to kind of some of the student-driven solutions and suggestions, what I took from this. Starting off more academically, students would continue with adding the hands-on and project-based learning. This would be obviously in our new hub that we're building and in Orbis programs, I've, every person I've ever spoke to that's on Orbis has only ever had amazing things to say about it. So I think expanding as we are with that would be very beneficial to our school. And I know students in Northview are also very excited for that as they get to go into Centennial and experience it. More classes between AP and normal, that is something I also heard a lot of, how some students feel there's too big of a jump between normal and AP classes where they don't have time to take on a fourth AP class, but then also maybe English 10 is just not challenging enough for them of how in 10th grade, we have like enriched biology, normal biology, and then eventually they'll get to AP and biology, maybe just something kind of in-between. That was what I gathered from a lot of students who want to challenge themselves, but also don't want to drown in millions and hundreds of AP classes. And then finally, just more time in class to work and reduce the homework, which obviously most teachers try and achieve that, but sometimes with 42 minutes per period, it's not gonna happen. So that's just something to think about. And then for kind of environment, culture, like teaching and support, I think that there have been very consistent support for all teachers and lots of students agree with that. So just continuing with that and then increasing the mental health, flexibility, and understanding because I know a lot of people personally who struggle with this and then they just kind of get swallowed up in their own work on top of it, which makes it hard to come back if you're already in a dark place and you're just kind of drowning and all, oh, I have this test, I have this homework. So there's obviously situational circumstances to that, but just something to keep in mind. And then finally, just to encourage teachers to experiment with different teaching methods. That's a big feedback I've gotten throughout all the grade levels of where students will report saying that they wish their teacher kind of varied the way they taught of where some people are visual learners, some people are experimental learners, some people just want a textbook, read it themselves, and I've got it. So just kind of having students be able to choose which path they learn best or just have a little more flexibility with that. That's something, it's a little difficult to implement, but just something to keep in mind. And then, yeah, the final thing would be people wish that they were a little more, a little more recognition for the arts and academics. They feel that the sports get often a lot of the spotlight because it's a public thing, people are going out performing, but then we have a lot of students that are submitting AP art portfolios and they feel that their five just is kind of pushed away because it's kind of overshown by the sports. And then same with academ, academics where it's the academic letter ceremony, but then it's just kind of like, oh, cool. And it's not really recognized as much as the sports. So that's kind of what students have said. And so, yeah, I really tried to tie this into the three pillars of rigorous and relevant academics, tons of people in supportive environments. For the rigorous and relevant academics, I would say that students are challenged and engaged and the progress towards a more project-based and real-world learning has greatly benefited them. And I think continuing to do that would be great for our community and district. For talented people, our teachers are caring and effective and they can, and continuing to grow the mentorship and collaboration between students and teachers has really benefited our district as well. And then finally, for supportive environments, students want respect, flexibility, and connection. And I feel like we've done pretty well with that, but just continuing to align that with the district goals for safe, inclusive schools would be incredible. Now, just a couple of questions I got about the hub. So students mainly had questions and ideas just about accessibility and usefulness because like Evelyn said, it's this big, huge proposal and students are just kind of confused where to look in the information. So the main concerns were just about clear communication of what to expect, what they're gonna get out of it, and how it's gonna benefit them and how resources will be used. A lot of students asked about the opportunities to make it more supportive as how the facilities will benefit them. There were lots of interest from students too. Whenever I would ask students about this, they were always very interested. It was not just like, oh, yeah, that's gonna happen, but I'll graduate by the time. It was always just, oh, that's really interesting. How is that gonna work in the future? Like, that would be a really nice thing to have in our district. So I think engaging with students on this would be great and they have always been very willing to talk to me about it and just kind of see what's gonna be happening. So they, I think the takeaway from that is students want to be involved in improving systems that directly support them. So if there's ever questions, I think students would be very happy to answer. And then, yes, just thank you for listening. Centennial, we're very proud of what we've accomplished, but we're also very willing and going to work on what we know we can improve. And if you have any questions or just don't hesitate to email me or talk to me, I will be happy to answer. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any directors have questions for Angelina?
Thanks for the idea for the pep rally school visit.
Yes.
I was like, duh, why would we not go on that? That's a lot of fun. So I'm gonna try to do that. And I think from both of you, I think we, I heard, students as stakeholders, right? Like, how do we continue to make sure that we're getting information to you guys and you always have great back? And so I appreciate you taking the time to get the feedback from the group and share it with us so we can take into consideration.
Yeah, of course. Anybody else? Yeah, I, I really appreciate you aligning it to the three pillars. I was like, that's, that's really helpful for us to, to view it from that perspective. So I appreciate that framework. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Okay, before we go on, I just realized that I didn't ask board members to take a minute to look at our guiding principles and norms. So if I could just take a second while the district gets set up here for our next agenda item, if I could just direct, uh, board members to take a look at our guiding principles and norms here, just as a reminder, as we get into some more of the meeting. All right, thanks for taking a minute to do that. Let's move on to item B, the district strategic plan update. Dr. Pruitt?
Good evening. The strategic plan continues to be our vision for expanding and improving learning opportunities and experiences for all of our students. In today's update, we'll share our, our progress towards that vision and priorities that have been identified for the remainder of the academic school year. Our mission is clear, has been clear. We continue to work to improve student engagement, their experiences, and skill development that positions them to work towards a future of choice, opportunity, and success. Incani's graduate profile identifies the essential skills and mindsets every student should possess upon graduation, which aligns to our efforts across classrooms, staff hiring and professional learning, and the maintenance and development of facilities that support student learning. Dr. Dimmar will now review progress in pillar one, rigorous and relevant academics.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. Good evening. I'm excited to present to you the progress on pillar one. As you look at the nine strategies that are in pillar one, there's really two big themes. One is student learning and then also post-secondary readiness. So I'm gonna provide you some feedback on these two themes. But I also want to give recognition to all of our teachers, our building leaders, academic services team, because this progress on, on this pillar is largely due to their work. So first, I want to talk about student learning progress. This is really aligned with that strategy, about 100% of our students will meet academic standards. And this is tied to those graduate profile skills that Dr. Pruitt just mentioned of knowledgeable, engaged, and understanding. The first celebration that I would like to speak to you about tonight is our 2025 Iowa School Performance Profile. As you know, this is a performance indicator that is measured by the state and it looks at our, several metrics are within this report. It looks at student growth and proficiency on state testing, which is the ISAS. It looks at graduation rate, chronic absenteeism, as well as post-secondary planning. The key takeaways from our results this year show strong academic performance with five of our schools rated as high-performing. And those are Prairie Trail, Heritage, Parkview, Northview, and Incani Centennial. There's also a notable ranking for one of our middle schools and both of our high schools as they are outperforming neighboring schools within the CIML conference as well as the Des Moines metro area. So we're proud of that. In 2024, we had seven schools that were identified as targeted, which also included all of our Title I schools. This year, proud to announce that all Title I schools have met the criteria and are no longer targeted. We do still have two schools that are targeted this school year. Last June, we shared the ISAS results with you, but I just wanted to bring it forward again tonight as it relates to this pillar. Our proficiency rates in ELA have maintained over the last year. We are implementing a new curriculum, CKLA, in grades TK through 8th grade, and we are implementing new resources in 9th and 10th grade this year. 11th and 12th grade are under curriculum review in English Language Arts. In math, as a district, we have made progress. Our proficiency rates continue to grow from 2024 to 2025. Proficiency rates in science have also shown improvement from 2024. Last year in grades 5th and 8th, we implemented a new literacy curriculum, as I just mentioned. And this curriculum has really a robust knowledge component to it, which focuses on vocabulary and comprehension. While I don't have data that suggests a strong correlation between the two, we do have to believe that this literacy content and implementation of this new curriculum is a reason why our science scores have increased. But we'll continue to monitor that. As we look at student learning progress by grade level, proficiency rates in elementary were maintained and increased by 3% in 4th grade. The cohort of students from 3rd to 4th grade also grew by 8%. Proficiency in elementary math increased in grades 4th and 5th from last year to this In our secondary ELA results, all of our grade levels but 11th are at 85% or above, which is well above the state average of 74%. We also saw, saw growth in grades 6, 9th, and 10th increase from last spring. Overall performance in secondary math ranges from 76% to 84%. Both 6th and 7th grade demonstrated consistent increases over the last three years. Grade 11 was the only grade level to show a continuous decline in proficiency scores and this will be an area of focus for us. So next, I'd like to talk about the other key theme in pillar one, which is post-secondary readiness. The district aims for all students to graduate post-secondary ready with a strong focus on career exploration and planning. This is connected to our graduate profile skills of authentic learning opportunities as well as staying curious. In alignment with Iowa's career-connected learning model, the past year, we focused on increasing opportunities for students, which includes experience for students to not only learn about work, but also engage in opportunities that will teach them working to learn. And so there you see some examples of how we are accomplishing that goal. As identified in our strategic plan, it's outline, and it's also outlined in our D cap, our district career and academic plan, we want to have a systems approach. We are intentional about creating career exploration opportunities in all grades TK through 12th grade. Here you see a list of those examples that all students have access to throughout their educational career. We believe these experiences are scaffolded, they're inclusive and embedded in, in all our grade levels. But as you heard our students tonight, this is an area of growth for us and we want to continue to expand these opportunities in the coming years. We are very close to achieving our goal of having 100% of our students in grades 6 through 12th with a post-secondary plan. Just three years ago, we were at 58% in 9th grade, or in 8th grade, excuse me. And so we believe that our building administrators, our counseling team, our teachers have really worked hard and are, play a critical role in that planning process to help us achieve this goal of getting 99% of our kids having a plan. We continue to collect data on the number of students in grades 9th through 12th who are enrolled in courses that will prepare them for their post-secondary plan. Our goal is to reach 90% by 2027, 28 as a district and we are on track to achieve this goal. So we're currently sitting at 87%, which is up 2% from two years ago. These courses include courses taken through DMAC, which are concurrent enrollment courses, AP courses, the DMAC Career Academies, our career and technical education courses, CTE courses, both at middle school and high school, as we believe all of those courses play into a student's post-secondary plan, no matter which path they choose. And with that, I would like to turn this over to Jody Graham, our executive director of HR, and she's gonna talk about pillar two.
Thank you, Dr. Dimmar. Good evening, directors. Tonight, I am going to provide a brief update for you on pillar two of our strategic plan, talented people. Ooh, how do I go back? This one? Okay, it's a little touchy. This pillar is about attracting, developing, and keeping great people in our district. One of our goals is to retain 85% of employees who meet performance expectation. One of our goals is to retain 85% of employees who meet performance expectations. We know that keeping high-performing employees help maintain stability, culture, and instructional quality in our classrooms. As we evaluate our progress toward our 85% retention goal, I want to take a moment and highlight for you tonight where we currently stand with staffing for the 25-26 school year. I am pleased to report we are fully staffed with certified staff this year. This reflects not only a strong retention in our district, but also highly effective hiring practices, especially given today's competitive educational market. On the paraprofessional side, we currently only have 11 vacancies, one of the lowest rates we've seen. In light of national challenges in filling support roles, there is a strong sign that our recruitment and retention efforts are making a real impact here in our district. Overall, these numbers show we're not just attracting talent, we are creating an environment where people want to stay and grow. With that in mind, I'll walk you through some of the strategies and supports that are driving our retention. We know from both our own survey data and national research, the manager plays, the manager matters most when it comes to retention. In our culture data and our staff exit survey data, staff consistently share that they feel supported, valued, and set up for success by their leaders. This echoes Gallup's research that 90% of retention is anchored to the manager. Beyond strong leadership, competitive pay and benefits also play a key role in retaining talent. We continue to offer competitive salaries, and our benefits remain a strong point of staff satisfaction. As you know, this year's health care premium increase was just 3.71%, the lowest we've seen in years. And as you saw in the previous slide, strong supportive leadership is vital to retention, and competitive pay and benefits are also critical. Together, these factors create the condition that helps us attract talent and, again, keep great people here in our district. Another key factor in retention is how safe employees feel, both in terms of physical safety on the job and the overall environment they work in. We are proud that our worker compensation mod factor dropped from 0.98 to 0.83 for the 25-26 school year. This shows improvement in our workplace safety and a strong culture of care. And for those of you unfamiliar with what a mod factor is, it's essentially our safety score. Everybody's assigned a number based upon our work comp claims compared to others in the same industry, and the goal is always to stay under 1.0. And because of our improved mod rate, we earned a 12% reduction in premium, which saved us nearly $73,000 in funds in which we can invest in other district priorities. In closing, our efforts are really around a multi-dimensional approach, from leadership development and competitive compensation and benefits to workplace safety and employee wellness. Our data shows, and I think we heard from our students tonight as they talked about their teachers, that our approach is working, and we remain committed as a district to building a workplace where talented people feel supported, valued, and view us as a place where they can learn and grow. Now, I'll turn it over to Ms. Samantha Akas.
Thank you, Jody. We've also had the opportunity to collaborate on some of these recruitment efforts, and as you know, we spent the last several years developing a campaign that capitalizes on data and behavioral insights to define some of those key competencies. So this allows our recruitment campaigns to be more targeted, highlighting the specific skills, mindsets, and values that predict success within an organization. It also allows our marketing and advertisement to speak directly to the most qualified candidates. And over time, it not only improves the applicant pool, but it builds a stronger employer brand, one that's seen as intentional, data-driven, and committed to matching people with the right roles for their long-term success. So as you know, this culminated in the campaign, "The Ankeny Experience," and in addition to the advertisements and the marketing, we also coached our hiring managers and district leaders to really hone in on the word-of-mouth marketing skills. And what that's allowed them to do is to define what the Ankeny Experience is and why you'd want to be a part of it. And so we've included some of those ads here tonight. We've heard some of the results of that work here tonight, and that work will continue as well. As we transition to the next pillar, we're going to start talking about the environments that support student learning as well. And so one of the objectives that we want to start with is the objective around authentically partnering with families in the school district. And so as we looked at that 100% number and thought about the families that we maybe weren't authentically partnering with and reaching, language barriers was one of the top issues that prevented people from connecting with the school district. As you know, we convened the Language Access Task Force, and a lot of that work, last year was really a planning year, and a lot of that work has kicked off this year. We started the year with training that was made available to all of our staff on the protocols and the resources available to them. When we conducted a survey, almost 80% of our staff said, "I intend to do this work, I just don't know how to." And so that was a really easy one to solve for us. The second thing we did was roll out two new tools, ParentSquare and Translate Live. ParentSquare is a communication tool that allows us to email, text, and send app notifications, and it provides a contextual translation for that. Even beyond thinking about multilingual communication, we've really gone from a district where our administration and our front office staff were responsible for communication and armed our full teaching staff with a communication tool that also provides translation, which is something we haven't been able to do before. The Translate Live devices are a really powerful tool that I've rolled out this year as well. It provides one-on-one translation in person, but it also allows for you to have an event where one person is speaking in one language, and any number of people could be following along on the app in a different language as well. I'm going to choose for this one to share a story instead of data that really impacted me this year. I spoke with a building secretary earlier this month, and she shared with me a family that spoke another language and was really committed to helping their kids succeed. They came to school, they tried really hard to communicate. The building secretary was trying in kind to communicate with this person, but it was always really hard, and they were never, both of them kind of walked away not really sure if they got the other person what they needed. The first time this family came in this school year, the secretary was like, "Wait, wait, wait." She went and grabbed the Translate Live device, got it set up for them, and started talking, and as she started talking, this mom started crying and just shared that it was the first time that she felt with ease that she could talk about her child and communicate with this person that she'd been trying so hard to connect with. And they both were able to have some of those conversations that they've been trying to for over a year now. So I just thought that was a moving story that I could share with you tonight. Another thing we were able to reinstitute this year was the multilingual family night, and that, as with much of this work, was cross-department collaboration that led to this night. The purpose of it is really twofold. One is to help people understand the Ankeny Experience and what education in Ankeny looks like, how to navigate the system, which apps go with which program, all that type of stuff. But it also helped connect our families with each other and gave them some time to get to know each other a little bit better and build some support systems themselves. We had 76 adults attend and 84 students, and we had an event in both the North feeder and the South feeder, and we look forward to continuing this Language Access Task Force work to help improve on this objective. So Dr. Hock will now share more about the supportive environments in our school district.
Good evening. Another objective in pillar three is that every student is going to learn in a collaborative, dynamic, and secure environment. And in order to do that, in order to achieve that objective, it's essential that we allocate our resources in a responsible way and have plans for all of our facilities. So in this past year, we have used the data from several different facility studies to revise our capital project plan, as we shared with you this past April, and we've implemented processes and plans to protect the general fund by using PEPAL and SAVE for a lot of our maintenance and construction projects moving forward. And Mr. Brown will share much more detailed information about our financials at our December meeting. Another pillar, or another objective of pillar three, is that all of our district facilities are updated to conform to the standards that we use when we build a new facility. So in the past year, as you know, we've done several major projects. At Prairie Ridge Middle School, we had the first phase of a multi-year project to replace the HVAC system there. You're looking at a picture of the new playground at Northwest Elementary, where we were able to partner with the PTO there to add new equipment there. And as you drive by on First Street, you'll notice that the entire playground has shifted quite a bit farther back from the street for student safety there. At East Elementary, we updated the restrooms. We're going to talk about that a little bit later tonight. At Westwood, we put doors on the pods on the west side of that building for student safety. At our high schools, we resurfaced the gym floors and repainted those and put LED lighting in, so it will look entirely different when we go to a basketball game this winter. At Centennial High School, we replaced the turf field and football and soccer field outside, and across the district this summer, we replaced quite a bit of concrete that was in need of repair. We are really excited about a new tool that exists on our website right now. You're seeing kind of a landing page, and many thanks to our communications team and Michelle in particular for building this for us. But we now have a place where our community can go pick the building that they're interested in and see all of the projects that we have planned out in our long-term project plan. Obviously, we've had those plans internally for quite some time, but this is the first time where our community can go in and really see what we're looking at, not just here in the next year, but in the next five to 10 years, again, to make sure that all of our facilities are up to the standard that we have for new construction. So at this point, I'd like to invite Mr. Ken Morris Jr. up to the podium to continue to talk about pillar three.
Thank you, Dr. Hock. Good evening, board members, student reps. How are y'all doing this evening?
Good, thank you.
All right. In Ankeny, family and community engagement is about partnerships and purpose. Our vision is that every family has regular opportunities to connect with our schools and support their child's learning. Last school year, we saw that vision in action. More than 4,100 volunteers gave over 12,000 hours of service. 901 families were supported through the backpack blitz, and 607 individuals received coats and winter gear through warming up for winter. Through Sports Buddies, 45 students built confidence and stronger connections with mentors from Big Brothers Big Sisters Central Iowa. Students shared, students from that program shared that they feel more connected to their schools, their peers, and the adults who care for them. These moments show what can happen when families in school, when families, schools, and community come together to create spaces where everyone belongs. So real quick, along with that, so that this is not just empty words, this weekend, I had a wonderful opportunity to attend a program that was supported by my office. One of my staff members worked with Northwest Elementary to do a pop-up food pantry in Green Tree Park to support the students and families in that attendance area. Needless to say, times are hard, and they're only getting harder. That's a fact. But with that, we had Kate Sizney, the principal, Crystal Thomas, assistant principal, Sue Smith, the social worker, and Brenna Pill, the counselor, not only gave of their time on a Saturday morning, they provided food and provisions for families and just anyone in that attendance area. Students were so excited, they were going and getting peers to get the word out. Families were coming, engaging, and I got to tell you, I was really moved when I talked about this is not just words on paper. We had a lot of families that came up, and, you know, they wanted help, but they were just afraid. And our staff just immediately just start packing bags, and I seen a lot of tears out there, tears of joy. And again, it moved me because we were able to provide provisions with no assumptions, with no judgments, and not only were we providing food for the body, but it was also food for the soul. And that's just, you know, one of many examples of what happens when communities and schools come together. So along that note, because education is desperate for some wins right now, and I got to tell you, we got a W in the chat, students. So last week, on the 23rd, last Friday, Ankeny Schools hosted its first-ever Principal for the Day event. Community partners from across the Ankeny and the Des Moines metro spent the day paired with principals in every building. They had the chance to see what it takes to lead a school, connect with students and staff, and experience the energy and heart of our classrooms. The goal was to build bridges between our schools and the community, deepen understanding of schools' operations, and spark new partnerships to strengthen learning and belonging for our students. It became more than a day of shadowing. It was a day of connection, shared purpose, and community pride that laid the groundwork for future collaboration across Ankeny schools. So at this point, I'm going to share the mic with Dr. Eric Pruitt to discuss some more ongoing work.
And so just to piggyback on the last slide that we just saw, I just want to thank staff here at the district office, all of our school leaders in our schools. We actually had Principals for a Day representation at Orbis in addition to Summit and beyond. And I also want to thank our community leaders that said yes to the invitation, and they've been invited for our second annual Principal for a Day next year. And so what does our work look like moving forward for the remainder of this year? So earlier this summer, Dr. Dimmar and her team shared information, and you saw a little bit of that information about our data relative to literacy and math and science. And what we shared this summer was that in order to reach that goal of 90% of our kids being proficient, we had to dig into the data a little bit deeper as far as identifying those students that we need to lift up to proficiency in an effort to support all students. And so we identified that in order to get more of our kids and to support more of our kids, we need to do a better job of supporting our kids that have IEPs. And so that's the work that we've been engaged in since the beginning of this year around how we're supporting our kids who are receiving special education services. Also, with regards to our work this year is around post-secondary learning. Again, how are we providing more opportunities and experiences for our kids, not only in high school, but then also in our middle school, and how we're connecting that to the learning that our kids are experiencing in our elementary schools. We want to continue to attract high-quality teachers, pay us, support staff to our school district, and so we will continue with events like the Educator Empowerment Conference. And then we'll also begin, continue to get out to the universities that invite us out to speak to up-and-coming educators. We are also with our face department, looking for connections and build better connections and engagement with our families and community. And so what we've been talking about is with the district our size, and that there's some things that we can do that are district initiatives, but the example that Mr. Morris just shared about a school-specific identified need But the example that Mr. Morris just shared about a school-specific identified need and event that was developed and created are those types of connections that we're wanting to get better at. And so Northwest identified a need and served that need for that family and that community. And I think that that's how we began to build better community connections for our entire district with each of our 18 schools doing what they need to, to meet the needs of their respective communities that lead up to the entire district. And then we want to continue to maintain high-quality facilities that meet the, that align to the academic and programmatic needs of our students. And so at this time, we'll take questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt and team. What questions do directors have?
I don't have a question, but a comment around the Principal for the Day. I saw a lot of social media posts from the people who came, so thank you. I was friends with a couple of them and heard great feedback, and I think it was an awesome experience, a way to connect them with our community, and we got some free marketing for it, so.
And what we didn't say, we want to thank Chef Joe. He catered the event, always want to show off the type of food that our kids are getting in the lunchroom, and we never-
Which clearly are better this year.
Yes, absolutely. And so thanking Chef Joe and Scott for the work that they're doing in the nutrition program, but always happy to highlight the great work that the adults are doing in the district.
I had a question for Dr. Dipmar on Slide 18. And the only reason I noticed it, because I was like, oh, there's K through 5, 6, 7th. Is there anything being done for 9th grade, or is it just lumped with 8th and 9th?
I would say that would be our next level of work. That's one grade level where we don't have an activity highlighted, and so we're focusing on that.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, stay tuned.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Dr. Dipmar, I actually had a question about that slide, too. Which of those items do all students experience, and which of those items are self-selected?
On Slide 18.
Yeah, the authentic career exploration. Like, what could we define as like a universal core experience?
Yep.
And then what is students choosing?
So I would tell you, looking through that list, the K-5 career, connected field trips, every kid is experiencing those, a career speaker day, every student. 7th grade is every student. 8th grade, those mock interviews and career panel happen in the business classes. So that would be every student. The post-secondary virtual person visits, the career showcases, I think those would be, and the junior achievement finance park would be a select group of students, so maybe more your tier two or tier three, right? Not all kids. Seminar career conversations are open to all students, and then as well as all the coursework, of course, would be sucked in by any kid. So a variety of all students, and some are just very handfuls of students that access it. There, I think there, I would say, all of it is open to every kid, but not every kid accesses it.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Yeah. Yep. Other questions or comments?
When did we do the strategic plan, or how many years are left on this?
It was like my first year, so.
It was approved in 2022.
2022, yeah. Have you found from the initial implementation, have you had to adapt much, and has that been easy?
So yes and no, and no. We were very aggressive with the current strategic plan. And we've just started talking about what our planning looks like for the next iteration of our strategic plan. I personally don't think that it needs a overhaul. I think that learning from mistakes over the past few years and engaging in discussions with our school leaders and teachers, identifying where we need to focus and narrow our focus, so they can go a little bit deeper versus trying to cover everything, is my, would be my preferred approach.
And then are you able to, I know the online is relatively new, but ingratiate a lot of this into that online platform, or is there plans to make sure, I mean, I don't know how you do the people when it's, the teachers are online, but is this still being part of our online?
Yeah, so one of the strategies in pillar one talks about having a variety of learning models. So I think that online is one of those options that we are expanding to kids. Is that-
No, like the career opportunities, career exploration, like all of these things, are they going to be available to our online students as well in some way, shape, or form?
Absolutely. Our students that are in Ankeny Virtual Academy are our students, and they're afforded the same opportunities. We would have to make sure we reach out to them, that they know about them, so that they can attend them. But yes, they do have the option to participate.
Or like, how do you judge talented people with the online teachers? Like, are you able to do that with the company that we're partnering with to evaluate those teachers or make sure that they're meeting our needs?
Currently, we are not doing that. No, but I think it's, as the Graduation Alliance, which is our online platform, they do collect feedback from families about their experience. And so I think that's something we could, you know, look at what they're surveying. But those, the teachers that are in Graduation Alliance are not part of our staff.
Yeah, I knew that. And then the last thing is, when you're talking about taking the next steps and supporting kids with IEPs in different areas, when you say kids, does that mean kids and families? Like, when you're supporting kids with IEPs, is it also supporting that family?
So I think that our initial focus is on the student, because those are the people that we are, are working with during the school day. I think that there are opportunities to identify additional resources and supports for our families. And I know Nancy Lehman has provided opportunities to bring those families together, to provide resources and support. And not that the families aren't my focus, but when I say us getting better, it's instructional practices, how we're developing IEPs, how we're supporting kids with, when possible, transitioning off the IEP. I think we have a lot of growth with regards to getting better with supporting those students that have those academic goal areas, and then also supporting the kids that have behavioral goal areas. But students first, then their families, would be my approach.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I do want to thank you for putting a Facility and Finance page together for just transparency with the community. So I know there's always been a lot of questions and concerns, and this is just a great way for us to direct them to the correct site, correct place to get those questions answered. So thank you for that.
I do have a question, kind of going back to a little bit of what the students said tonight, and then what I've been hearing with like post-secondary readiness. Do we have like guidance counselors that are more, are they more like the academic advisor, or are they playing both roles, like a counselor, academic advisor? Can you speak to that? Of who are the people that are guiding our children to help them, or students, to help them with our post-secondary readiness and get them the information where they say they just don't want to wait till like their junior year? Is that like, are we putting all that on the counselors, or?
So that is part of their role. So all of our counselors do both the things you just said, right? Focus on the whole child. I think the counseling group, H-12, has taken a more strategic approach in the past couple of years, which is why our data is improving. For example, I think, I believe it's at Ankeny High School, all the counselors push into English 10 and make sure that they give their support, because every student takes English 10. So there's been more strategy in the folk, in how they've delivered the post-secondary work to students. Same thing happens at Centennial, I believe, in a science class. I would also add that even just three years ago, we recognized this as an area of growth for us, because not all of our administrators and our counseling team, we didn't have a comprehensive plan. And so we have a district leadership team, DLT, Secondary DLT, that meets once a month, and our counselors, our principals, and it's led by Dr. Yurik. She explicitly meets with that team monthly to go over post-secondary options and what the plan is, and makes sure implementations happen at the school level. So while I do think this is an area of growth for us, we've heard this from the students, I believe our district current academic plan has a more focused effort so that we can get those results and make sure all students are informed. But we have some work to do.
I have more of a, I have more of a statement, or I think just there's important work that we're doing when we are doing stuff like making sure they feel safe and they're fed. With the hierarchy needs of the students, if they are fed and they feel safe and they feel welcome, so I think that's very important work when we are, you know, finding ways to feed them, because that's how we're going to get higher test scores and get the achievement that we need. And so I don't, I don't want someone to think, well, how is that fitting our pillars when it really, really does? And how essential it is for our students to have that in order to be able to focus on their schoolwork. So I just want to appreciate that aspect as well.
Thank you. It's very informative. You know, it's like the work we constantly talk about. Sometimes we got to take a step back and look at it holistically, too. So I appreciate the update. All right, let's move on to item C, board meeting dates. This is an opportunity for us to have a discussion, and then we'll talk about it later. This is related to whether we want to have, moving forward, does the board believe on dates when kids don't have school, like on a Monday, should we move our board meeting to a Tuesday? So I don't want to be clear that we're kind of on the same page there. So I believe, Dr. Pruitt, our stuff, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's maybe two dates that remain on this academic calendar that that would apply to?
Yes.
Yeah, it was on Dr. Pruitt's update a couple weeks ago.
And then consideration, obviously later on, we're talking about the 26, 27 board meeting dates, so kind of two sets here.
Yeah.
So do you have anything to add to that at all? Okay.
No.
Just, obviously, this isn't an action item till later, but just want to open it up for conversation here at the board table. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I've definitely heard feedback, and just as we think about onboarding new board members, now that we've got these different days off on Mondays, at times, if you choose to utilize those dates to take a short vacation with your family or whatever, I don't want it to be a deterrent for board members to choose to opt in to serve. So I think I was one of the ones that made the suggestion that we could consider doing something different on the dates when there was a conflict with that, so.
I would support that. I mean, I think in the past, we've had issues with that with fall break, parents and care and everything, and just, and I would even say on those dates, not to even have a work session, you know, if you have to have them, just make it as a, starting as late as possible for those parents that are trying to do activities or come back from a travel or other engagement with their children.
Are you saying if we left it on a Monday?
If you did, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Other comments or thoughts?
No, I like moving them to a Tuesday.
I had a question, too, on, and I realize I, just a question about this. In November next year, we have three in November, whereas this year we have one in November. Yeah, I don't know if it's warranted to have three board meetings in a month, if that's-
The reason we had one is because of the election this year, this year, and then next year, there's no election. And so we, and then we have one in December. And so that's why it's three in November and then one in December. But it's your meeting.
I would only echo that, because in November, we also have our-
The convention.
Yeah, convention. And so it does feel daunting sometimes to have all that in one month.
So I think that convention, the convention will usually fall, I believe, on that November 16th, that week. So we will, that, what is it, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? If we choose to attend that, it would be that week.
And then I think the other reason why we were going every two weeks is just for the business of the district.
Is that a high need month? Or, I mean, is there, is there a lower or higher volume in different, I mean, we've got a break in there and some other stuff, so is there, would it be unreasonable to remove one of the November dates?
November for 26, 27?
Yeah.
You want to wait until the 26, 27?
Sure.
Or are we able to talk about it now? Okay. So we, that, November is typically when we have the demographer come in, speak with us. We begin some of the budgeting aspects for the next fiscal year. We begin discussing parameters with regards to negotiations.
Yep.
So those are heavy topics in November.
So yeah, your concern would be if we take one away, we're going to have some full meetings. Yeah.
I think I need to, I would need to look at, I think the last meeting in November could potentially, but then I would need to look at December.
Yeah, the tricky part about December is if you take one of those November ones, like if you check the last one out, and you move that up to the 7th, we don't, I don't believe we have school on the 21st, like it's the start of Christmas break. So then you're not having a board meeting from December 7th until January, which I know there's a holiday in there, but there's always bills that have to be, you know, paid. So.
And we don't want to have a special meeting during the week of Christmas.
Right, is it just getting creative on how you solution that, right? Do you, if that's just what you have to order business to pay bills, do you get creative on how you still have a meeting, but make it all-
I would rather have three meetings than two long meetings.
Agree.
And to me, it's just like, it's every other week, which is what our cadence is. I think it just looks like, I know sometimes when we have five Mondays, we have the fifth Monday off.
November 30th is the end of, I mean, it would, you know, kind of fall in the first week of December.
And you could call it the first Monday in December. Yeah. So I guess, any other thoughts on not having board meetings on non-student days? One way or the other?
No. I'm in favor of just keep moving it to the Tuesday.
Yeah. And then, do we want Dr. Pruitt to revisit the-
Is there any other conflict on Tuesdays that we might not be thinking about for all the rest of you in the room? Just to be respectful.
Well, it's not uncommon for us to do it, like we do it on some holidays.
It's only going to happen a couple of times, but-
Yeah.
I think for the 26, 27 calendar, we accounted for non-student days based off of my previous conversation.
Yeah.
I agree with everyone.
Thanks, Amy.
Do we, I guess, before we get to voting, which will be down later on, 26, 27 dates, are we comfortable with keeping the three November and the one in December?
Fine.
Yes. Okay, I just didn't know if we wanted to pull it and-
I think based on all the information that goes into consideration for that month, that makes sense.
And a question for the board, based off the discussion relative to the two meetings for this year, is there, what is the board?
I think if we, I think what we would like is to, at the next meeting, vote to change those to Tuesdays, the two that are remaining for this academic calendar. We'd have to vote on that, right? Yeah.
That's correct, yeah.
It doesn't have to be the next meeting, but sometime between now and the next time, there's a Monday when there's not school. We could vote on that. That would be good.
Okay.
Okay. Let's move on to item D. We have Facility and Finance Committee minutes. Any questions here?
No.
E is policy minutes. F is SEAC. I'm just going to keep going, guys, unless you interrupt me. G, we have our monthly financial update report for September. And then H, we have donation receipts. And then H, we have donation receipts. And then item A, we have any board member committee participation reports.
I had the Ankeny School Foundation and we did our grant review process. So we'll be making that announcement out with the grants and rewarding to our teachers and student groups. We do have our trivia event coming up on January 23rd. This is another event that we've added to raise funds. And then we have a couple nominations that we're seeking to fill some board positions on that, so.
Oh, I also had, I met with Dr. Yuric on the D cap. And we talked about really great things that are coming along. Some of them is how they're trying to integrate SchoolLinks, which is helping with what we talked about tonight in the words. Secondary planning, thank you. And one of the things that we had discussed is how, like, you know, all this with student loans and how students are going to know. And they're working on how to get more FAFSA and stuff, education in, and there's conversations with that. And I'm really excited because in January, for those in the groups, we're going to do a ride along for student internships. So it's going to be like, kind of like being a police officer day, but not really. It's just what I dream about when I hear ride alongs. So really doing some great work here. I didn't even touch on a smidge of everything that's going on and all the great work that's being done for post-secondary, so.
We also had Facilities and Finance. And I think one of the things I was going to mention was just the dedicated page on the website, which was shared. And I thought that was an awesome addition. And then the other thing that I heard about that I thought was important to just share and reiterate is that, I think Mike shared when he kind of started in his role that they did an audit with a third party of all of our buildings to help build out the capital expenditures budget and also prioritize projects. And so I thought that was great to hear that there was an independent party that came in and assessed our facilities. So we have a thorough understanding of where the gaps are and then could prioritize from there to plan on closing those gaps as we can. So I thought that was great.
Joy and I had the TQ Committee tonight before the board meeting. We spent some time reflecting on last year's TQ expenditures, setting budget allocations for the upcoming, for this year, really. Looked at feedback from last year's Summer Academy and then made some decisions for this year's Summer Academy so Dr. Dipmar and her team can start planning that. Anything to add, Joy?
I feel from what I heard at my table, or I guess just from the meeting itself, that there was some really good feedback regarding the teacher academy of courses that were offered. Good suggestions on, you know, locations going forward. But overall, I feel it was positive feedback that came from last year's Summer Academy. And just looking to see how we can expand some courses that were pretty popular last year. Ran into a little bit of problem with signing up for the courses because it was, registration opened at 8:00 a.m. on a school day, which some of our elementary teachers were obviously working. So we are going to, we talked about a plan to make it more equitable for our elementary and our secondary teachers to kind of get registered all at the same time versus during the instructional day.
Any other committee report? Thanks, everybody. Item J, Contracts and Agreements at the Building Level. Do we have any questions here? All right, let's move on to old business. Item A, may I have a motion to approve and accept the contracts and agreements as recommended?
Motion, second.
Do you have any questions on the contracts here? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, can I have a motion to approve and accept the policies, second and final reading as recommended? Policies are for immediate implementation upon the second and final reading.
Motion, second.
Do you have any questions here? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item C. Are there any written or oral comments regarding the public hearing for Crocker Elementary Mechanical Electrical Renovation? All right, seeing and hearing none, let's move on to D. May I have a motion to approve Crocker Elementary Mechanical Electrical Renovation Plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of renovation as recommended?
Motion, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, do we have any written or oral comments regarding the public hearing for Northeast Elementary Re Roof Phase 3 Project? I feel like everything is a phase three. Like, do I miss phase one and two?
I feel like everything's a roof.
We have a lot of roofs. Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the Northeast Elementary Re Roof Phase 3 Plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of project as recommended?
Motion, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item G, Program of Studies. May I have a motion to approve the Fall 2025 Program of Studies for implementation in 2026, 2027 as recommended?
Motion, second.
This was included, I believe, in our update on Friday. Does anybody have any questions about this program of studies? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to new business. The 26, 27 board meeting dates as recommended. May I have a motion to approve the 26, 27 board meeting dates as recommended?
Motion, second.
So you accounted for moving them to Tuesdays if it was a non-student day?
Yes, I think that you'll see in the document attached, there's one, there's one day that is a Tuesday. And I think that's in 2027, January 2027.
Can't tell when you look at it because it says the date unless you're looking at a calendar with it.
But Tuesday. Yeah, and Labor Day, I think, too. And we're okay with keeping the three in November, kind of given the way the calendar looks. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Do you think that we could get calendar invites for those?
That would be so nice.
Thank you.
Great question.
All right, item B, Policies, First of Two Readings. May I have a motion to approve the Policies, First of Two Readings as Recommended?
Motion, second.
So I do want to lift up, this is the first opportunity that the seven of us collectively can have a conversation around Policy 203.8, which is the Public Purpose and Use of Public Funds, which is the, you'll see quite a bit of renovations there. I think as we talked about last time we were here, we looked at a couple other districts for some guidance. We were, you know, I think we're always fighting that battle of what's appropriate oversight without hindering the efficiency of the school district to be able to do the work that it needs to do. And so you'll see there's layers in there. I believe three, maybe, layers in there around dollar amounts for when we would need to go out for like a formal RFP or just get quotes or move on. You don't need to do that at all. So I don't know, Steph, if you'd have anything to add? And then I'm going to ask Shelley and Sarah if they have anything to speak about from policy.
No, I don't have anything to add to it. I think that covers what we were looking to accomplish.
Sarah or Shelley, I don't want to put you on the spot, but anything to pick up from Policy Committee at all?
No.
Or Amber, oh, you were, I kicked you out so I could go. Okay, all right, yes.
No, I was, you did well, you did a good job. And there were some questions, which I think is always good, but we're good.
So any feedback from others or thoughts from others who weren't a part of the Policy Committee? Okay, we'll assume no news is good news. Questions about any other policies?
I think we probably should also lift up Policy 0803.10, the purchasing policy.
Oh, that's the one I meant to be talking about. It's me, sorry, wrong number.
We knew what you were talking about.
That's the one that I meant to be talking about the whole time. My apologies.
I think we're all on the same page, though.
Well, clearly not. Amy was, Amy thought I was, she was really following along with the public, the use of public funds. My bad. Yes, I was specifically referencing 803.1. Okay, hearing, no further discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I believe we'll get that last reading in at our last, at our next meeting before we transition to a new school board. All right, item C, Public Schools Strong and Iowa CCI Resolution. We're going to open the floor for public comment. We didn't have folks sign up for this. So you're just going to go in the order that feels best to you if you want to speak to the board.
I'm Dixie Webb.
Yes, thank you. Introduce yourself. Thank you.
And I'm from Ankeny, Iowa. Supporting public schools is a nonpartisan mainline Iowa value. It is broadly popular. Citizens of Ankeny, as well as all Iowans, want their tax dollars to fully fund public, not private, schools. Tonight, you can show your support for fully funding public schools by adopting the resolution as we all work together to urge our governor and the state legislature to do the right thing by fully funding public schools and phasing out the voucher program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sherri Hawk, and I live in Ankeny. Just wanted to express my sincere gratitude for everybody in this room because you have put up with us and listened to us and met with us and spent a lot of time around us. And you've been open, honest, and you're dignified and respectful to the end, so. The horrifically low Iowa SSA increases over the past decades have left our public schools, in some cases, in pretty dire straits and in need of resuscitation sometimes. And that can't take place. I don't believe at all without at least 5% increase in SSA for enough years at least to make up for the state taxpayers funding private school vouchers with money diverted from our public schools. So we all know that that isn't a very sustainable future for all of us. And our public schools need and deserve so much more. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to end. I have a whole long thing, but I'm not going to say it because I know that this has been a long night for you as well. We do appreciate your volunteer work and listening to us and in our community. We're here to support you, but we also really want to urge you tonight to vote on this and take a strong action. We want to be a voice with you as you legis, as you think about all of the complicated things that you're deciding and voting on. And we just really want to encourage you to have thoughtful conversation tonight about this. Your voice does really matter. Our voice matters as well as community members. And when you speak as a unit, it does give strength to our district. And it brings visibility to our educators and families who really care deeply about our district. So just thank you for taking this vote seriously and for standing up for resources for our educators and for our students in Ankeny. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to a board discussion. I was like, what do I call that, C2? Board discussion around this. So I'd open the floor for the board to talk about the resolution.
I can kick us off. I wanted to first say thank you to the group that has been persistent and patient with getting feedback from the community involving us to get our voice and build a relationship with each of us on the board and with Dr. Pruitt. And just wanted to offer appreciation for the work that you guys have put into this. My personal belief on this is that we have been very intentional around developing our priorities that we want to advocate on. And we've been thoughtful about that. I think each of us have relationships with different people that serve us at the state and federal level. And we've had a really good plan around our legislative priorities to connect with those individuals and influence the things that you guys mentioned in the resolution. And so I think that I've remained committed to those priorities. And I feel like that is the way in which, as a unified board, we've agreed upon that as the way in which we will support the things that you guys mentioned. So that's kind of where my head is at on it. But I'm interested in hearing from others as well.
Yeah, I mean, we complete a survey. We provide a lot of thought to talk about our legislative priorities and being intentional about understanding where our district is at, where we need, where we want to go, where we need that support. So just echoed that same sentiment, Steph.
Others?
I'm, I'd want to right now and support it. Like, we talk about, you know, our legislators. Yes, that's important, but it also sends a message to our community, to our staff, that, you know, this goes into a lot more detail than our legislative priorities. When you look at it stark, 91% of Iowa students are in public schools. That's us standing up for 91% of kids in Iowa. We, yeah, we just don't go into this level of detail. We don't get this strong in our legislative priorities. And I agree with our legislative priorities. I voted on them, obviously. I just like the message that this sends because it's a lot stronger. It's a lot more detailed. And it's more than just sending a message to legislators. It's sending a message to everyone in Ankeny, everyone in Iowa that supports public education. So I would say to vote on it and I would support it, but I'm just one of seven, so.
I do want to thank you for showing up, always having a positive message when, you know, speaking about public strong, public schools strong. I agree with the message. I agree that we also, we do have a plan. So I think that a lot of it is the same. You know, we all, we do have mutual goals. thank you. And thank you for putting a voice to the public, to the rest of the community, to show support for public education.
Voting on this doesn't diminish our plan. That's kind of the, people are talking about where it's one or the other. It's not an and, or it's not an or. I just, I guess I'm a little confused about that message.
I was just going to chime, like, chime in to, you know, we've, we've had discussions at the board table regarding just resolutions in general, not ones that have been brought to the community. This is the first one since I've been on the board that a community, the community group has brought to us. And we were advised by the Iowa School Board Association to not sign on to resolutions because it kind of puts a bind in with like our legislators. And so it's not that we're not agreeing on what you're proposing. It's just the guidance since I've been on the board is to not, not, not pass the resolutions, I guess you could say. And we also got the same, correct me if I'm wrong, was it UEN also gave us that same advice? And those are two big organizations that we lean into for support to help, to help guide us up here at the board table. So for that, I just kind of go back to what we've done in the past and the conversations we've had and the guidance we've had regarding other resolutions that we have, you know, brought up or maybe have planned to pass in the past.
Any other thoughts?
I just, I honestly still have a lot of questions of, and of what the resolution does different than our priorities. And what the, I'm having trouble understanding what the benefit of one over the other, or not that they're against or they could do both, but it just seems duplicative. And so I have some concerns on that. And then I'm not hearing of this resolution happening anywhere else. And so I'm curious why Ankeny started it first. But my.
But my main concern is kind of with the resolution is, this is a resolution that I love. I have a lot of passion for it. The excitement of getting 5% for our schools is wonderful. And I can't tell you the passion that I have about the vouchers. But my problem is, is when it's coming from the community and we've set the precedence of this kind of thing, what happens when it's not so positive? And it goes against a board that there's, you know, like, are we setting a precedence for some future negative things to happen by, by having such a thing? But I cannot stop my sentence without saying how much I, I totally appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. I think any of us could agree that anybody that's standing up for public schools is a wonderful thing in our, in our thing. And I, I'm just struggling to understand what a resolution will do, what the benefit will be for, for getting this. If this is going to help or if it's just not? If it's going to do more good than bad or bad than good? If anybody has thoughts?
Yeah, I want to echo the gratitude that many board members have indicated here for your advocacy around this. We are grateful to have partners on our journey in this discussion around strong state, strong supplemental, supplemental aid for schools. I do want to push back a little bit. Amy, on your saying that this has more detail than our legislative priorities do. I think they say, they get at the same information. I think this just has more, perhaps, cited facts in it.
Maybe I should have said different than less.
But I don't, I don't want to send the message that we haven't been thoughtful and articulate about our priority around adequate and timely state supplemental aid. I, I want to pick up where Joy left off. It isn't, we have a responsibility, I believe, as school board members to meet our legislator, legislature where it is. And we have spent a lot of time trying to build relationships, trying to come together around collective advocacy. Just in the last years, the first time I feel like we've tried to put together a concerted advocacy effort. It's been very haphazard and left to individual board members. I think there's a lot of room on that runway left for us to get better at that, but I do think that we are getting better at that. And so, so when I look at this, it is, I have to think about, like, what is my instinct and what I think is best for me as a director representing this community? I am with Amy in the sense of like, I would, I would love to sign on on this if it's Katie as an individual. I would have been a person who signed on to this as a constituent of the community. But I also have to think about where this goes. If the board signs off on it, it gets sent to the legislature, to our legislators. And the reality is this, this would put a bad taste in their mouth. And we have worked very hard to build relationships with them in a way that is nonpartisan and find wins where we can get them. And so for me, I am thinking a lot about the long game and the importance of our, our relationship with our legislators. And so for me, it is not about the content that is on here. I wholeheartedly agree with it. And I think the board agrees with advocacy around SSA. It is the, the path of the resolution where I have concerns. And that is what is preventing me from feeling like I can sign on, off on this. So I'd take feedback from my colleagues on that.
I guess I have yet to see much of a positive of the path we've been chosen. Not doing resolutions hasn't really gotten us anywhere. We don't really have a lot of wins. And so I guess being scared of the legislature is like, is just, I don't understand it because it's, it's not getting us anywhere.
I don't, tell, talk to me about being scared of the legislature.
We don't want to do this because you said it will land on their desk and it will upset them.
That's not being scared of them. It's thinking about what's, what's, what's a better advocacy? I don't think pissing people off is a good advocacy.
It's just valuing relationships and the long game. How, how can you say it hasn't gotten us anything?
Well, when you look at the things they're asking for here, SSA.
What if it would have been worse without those relationships? What if we hadn't provided perspective to our legislators as they voted on things that it didn't change their mind? We can't say that with confidence that what we have done so far hasn't had an impact.
But this isn't providing any sort of perspective? Like, I just, I don't, I don't understand. I guess I never will.
It's just valuing the relationship.
I still just go back to the guidance we've received from I, from the School Board Association and the Urban Education Network. From two, from two groups that we seek guidance from, that, that's, that's the guidance that they've given us.
And it's not going to prevent us from sharing it with them that, hey, a community, group of community members took the time, got the signatures, did all this great work to bring this forth to us. So that's not going to stop us from presenting this to them at all and saying, here's another, you know, artifact to present our legislative priorities for, put forth with them.
Well, and I want to be crystal clear. I would love to continue, regardless of how this goes, to, to take you at your word and think about how we can continue to advocate together side by side. I, that I think is, is really important as we move into this session.
Yeah, that's what I was going to, I guess, maybe wrap my thoughts up with is just that whether we vote on this or not, I don't think that means that we can't continue collaborating and that these two things can't serve different purposes and have different avenues that get us all advanced towards the same goals. So I don't, I don't think that it is, if we don't do it, it doesn't mean things can't, things can't continue and that we can't continue collaborating. I think, like Joy said, a good point, that we're, we're leaning on guidance that we're getting from professional associations that support us and valuing the relationships that we have developed. And that everybody on the board has, you know, different approaches to relationships. And that's okay, too. I think it's just that both can still exist and work to support our schools.
Any other items for discussion? All right, I want to move on to board action here. So I'm going to ask Melissa for some overview here of what options we have.
So I heard a lot of discussion about your 25, 26 legislative priorities. And if the board isn't able to adopt this resolution outright, I think my recommendation would be to reaffirm the board's commitment to those priorities, especially as we head into the legislative session. I looked up those priorities and we could either reaffirm your commitment to all because there's four, or priority one is adequate and timely state supplemental aid. Call that one up, maybe. That would be the most closely aligned to this resolution. So I, I'm hearing maybe there'd be consensus on reaffirming that because I've heard a few of you talk about those priorities.
Thoughts there from the, from the board?
Fine with that.
I like that approach. And I like the idea of affirming the one that specifically aligns to what they've brought forward.
Okay.
So what I have here, Melissa, is, I'm not actually asking for this. I want your confirmation.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to reaffirm the board's commitment to its 25, 26 first legislative priority, adequate and timely state supplemental aid?
Yes.
Is that okay? All right, can I have a motion to reaffirm the board's commitment to its 25, 26 first legislative priority, adequate and timely state supplemental aid?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, may I have a motion to approve setting the date for public hearing for Northwest Elementary and Parkview Middle School Partial Re Roof Project for Monday, November 17th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom of the Ankeny Community School District, 406 Southwest School Street, Ankeny, Iowa?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, may I have a motion to approve setting the date for the public hearing for the Centennial High School Track Replacement Project on November 17th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom for the Ankeny Community School District, 406 Southwest School Street, Ankeny, Iowa, as recommended?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.